Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm sorry for the delay, our closed session ran over a tad bit. Appreciate your patience. We're gonna get started. Now, I call this meeting to order.
Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, equal liberty and just for all.
Ms. Thomas, roll call please.
Dr. Bellamy.
Ms. Hill.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Present.
Mr. Signer.
Ms. Galvin.
Here.
And Counselor Signer had a family matter that he had to take care of this evening, so he will attempt to join us once he gets his family back to Charlottesville, but based on our agenda for the night, we may end before he's back in town, but just wanted to give you an update on that. Are there any announcements?
I have a couple. Mayor Walker, if you don't mind. Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody's having a good day. Two announcements for me. One, this comes on behalf of Ms. Maxine Holland, our 19th Annual Juneteenth Invitation. So formally, you are invited to attend this year's Juneteenth Celebration. It is the oldest known celebration that commemorates the ending of slavery in the United States. It grew out of the freed slaves' desire to remember that day, June 19th, 1865, and we will celebrate through history, music, poetry, dance, and participatory activities. On Friday, June 14th, starting at 6:00 PM, our local ancestors will be honored. Then, on Saturday, June 15th, we will continue celebrating outside in front of the African American Heritage Center, starting at 5:00 PM. Sample food prepared by the best cooks in the area, soul food, pound cake, pies, and more. Support your local vendors. Ms. Maxine Holland says, "Make sure you bring people with you." Again, this is Friday and Saturday, June 14th and 15th, at Jefferson School African American Heritage Center. Please be sure to be in attendance if you need a flyer. I have one. And then, secondly, I have several. Mr. Harold Foley wants a few, so you can see him with the "More Justice, Less Poverty" shirt in the back, he'll get you one. The second announcement I have is, we're looking for everyone to register. We officially got things squared away, so WECO2 is going to have a Run the Streets four-miler. This will take place on Saturday, June 29th. It's gonna be a four-mile run, starting at the African American Heritage Center, and will run through some of the traditional African American neighborhoods, as well as sites here in the community. So all of you wonderful folks who enjoy jogging in the bike lanes, you can jog, you can walk, you can run. Mr. Vandiver's gonna come with his wheelchair, shoot some basketball hoops while jogging, which is gonna be impressive, all from the wheelchair. And we hope to see you there. You can sign up online, www.wecotwocville.com/RunTheseStreets, and flyers and information will be disseminated shortly. I hope you all can come out. That's it.
All right. Any other?
Mayor Walker, I'd just like to acknowledge that the City of Paris tonight is grieving the loss of a World Heritage Site, and that was the burning of Notre Dame Cathedral. It is a devastating loss to the world. The firefighters are working as hard as they can to control it. I'm sure that lives are in danger. I just think it's a sad moment, you know, in world history.
Indeed. Prayers up for them, for sure.
And prayers are out there for the whole City of Paris.
And just real quick, earlier today, around at noon, we had a press conference and introduced our new city manager, Dr. Richardson, who will start on May 13th, to the community at a press conference, and he's here tonight. So, just wanted to, you know, let you all know, since he's still in the room. And do we have any proclamations done for tonight?
We don't have any proclamations, but we did give an acknowledgement and a proclamation slash resolution to the University of Virginia men's basketball team. We had two of our representatives, Vice Mayor Hill, as well as Ms. Galvin, both say a few words at the event. And shout out to the board, the young men. They are phenomenal, phenomenal young men on the court, as well as off the court. And today, we got announcements that Todd Jerome and Deandre Hunter will be foregoing their senior years to go to enter the NBA draft.
Oh, too bad for them.
And good for them. Two young men who I know personally, and they work extremely hard and do a lot of great things in the community, and wish them well in the next steps in their careers. And again, kudos to all of the coaches and team. They've done a phenomenal job, I'm very, very proud of them. So, go Hoos, right, Mayor Walker.
Right. And thank you, Counselor Bellamy, for facilitating that.
Oh, it's no problem, no problem.
All right. So next, we have the Consent Agenda. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on an item that's on the consent agenda? All right, Ms. Thomas, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent Agenda A, minutes, April 1, 2019, special and regular meetings. April 8, 2019, special meeting. Due to technical issues, the March 18, 2019 minutes will be available at the May 6 meeting. B, appropriation, funds from VML Insurance Programs, $11,374, second of two readings. C, appropriation, funds from Ryder, $7,850, second of two readings. D, appropriation, funds from Trinity Steel Erection Incorporated, $2,856, second of two readings. E, appropriation, funds from Penn National Insurance, $12,500, second of two readings. F, appropriation, Virginia Fire Equity and Diversity Conference, $50,000, second of two readings. G, appropriation, FM Global Fire Prevention Grant, $3,268, first of two readings. H, appropriation, Virginia Housing Solutions Program Grant Award, $27,728.46, second of two readings. I, appropriation, Virginia Department of Social Services Employment for Temporary Aid to Needy Families Participants Grant, second renewal, $58,824, second of two readings. J, ordinance, telecommunications franchise to MMI Atlantic LLC, second of two readings. K, resolution, CPA TV York Property Lease Agreement and the Ryle Thomas Show LLC License Agreement, second of two readings.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone here, after hearing the reading, who would like to speak on the consent agenda? All right, is there a motion?
I move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, please vote. Carrie's for to serve. Next, we have our interim city manager, Mr. Mike Murphy's, response to community matters from the April 1st meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. A few items for follow-up this evening. The first is a question in your last council meeting from Rebecca Quinn, and that was related to the report you were receiving from the Water and Sewer Authority and about infiltration. And Ms. Hildebrand has provided that response. I don't see Ms. Quinn here this evening, so we'll also email her this response. But in order to minimize inflow and infiltration and to minimize service disruption, City Utilities has developed an ongoing capital improvement program that includes rehabilitation and replacement of the sanitary sewer system. To date, the city's rehabilitated 44 miles, or 26% of the city's sanitary sewer system. City Utilities has invested approximately $30 million toward that effort in the last 14 years, and City Utilities will continue to complete its current prioritized list of the sanitary sewer system projects that are scheduled within the next five years. The next item, that is a follow-up item from last week, is a question from Ms. Turner, who is present, and it had to do during a discussion of the real estate tax, and a question about whether there have been foreclosures as a result of that. And I did have some significant correspondence with the city treasurer today, Mr. Vandiver. And we have had, in calendar year 2019, no foreclosures in the city, or have not pursued any sale of any properties due to delinquent taxes. In 2018, there were, as I recall, five properties sold by the city, and each of them was at least six years tax delinquent at that time. And they did have a range of different tax that was due, from a number that seemed similar to the one that Ms. Turner was talking about, $3,350, all the way up to $37,561 in delinquent taxes at the time. You know, any excess sale does go, proceeds do go back to heirs of a property, or folks, if that is the situation that causes the change. I would say that according to Mr. Vandiver, there is no case in which somebody has been removed from an occupied parcel. So, I will continue to follow up if you have any additional questions on that matter. I know that we have spoken at a couple of different council meetings now, there has been some media coverage, and we have public commenters tonight about the issue of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. I told you that I'd come back with some follow-up about city actions this evening. So, you're aware that there's some parking signs that have gone up, general parking signs that are not adequate, and we actually have an order out to add to the city wayfinding, I believe, in seven different locations. So, see Mr. Duncan there, to get people directed to the lot that is currently at the Charlottesville Almaral Rescue Squad. Also, to add signage at that location, there are some signs that need to be adjusted, heights, et cetera, to meet ADA, as I understand it. There is a brand-new, what was really just a construction lay-down area outside the softball field at the different section of McIntyre Park, and that was identified as an area in one of those contacts from Mr. Vandiver. You should be aware that we did have it paved last week, and there are two accessible parking spots there. You know, the question, I think, from the public and many members of the groups that have contacted my office and the council, is about the distance to the memorial. And, you know, towards that end, we have volunteered a couple of actions, including some benches along the way, and the possibility of a reservation system, which we're prepared to implement, to get folks kind of shuttled up there. I know that the veterans that are present tonight have some additional interests in accessing the spot. There's been some question about what created that limited access, and can council act to kind of reverse that? It's my understanding of state code, but I've asked Mr. Blair to investigate this, that once council acts and the project is closed out, then it requires the state to act. It's not that the locality can then counteract that. Requires exploration by the attorney's office, and we'll certainly give you an update on that at the next meeting. I think that the consistent theme is that, you know, folks would like to explore a different type of access to the memorial, and I think that the best way is, as community members have suggested, and so I'm asking you all tonight to endorse my recommendation that I, on your behalf, meet with Mr. Vandiver and Mr. Schisler to determine a working group to make recommendations about access to the memorial, and that you endorse that group at your next meeting of council, which will be on the night of May 6th.
I would have no objection.
I support that. Mr. Murphy, thank you.
So, the last item for update from the manager is, I have Mr. Duncan here. Ms. Parker has brought up with you on a number of occasions, what are the measures that might be taken at the intersection of 8th and Main. Ms. Parker's not here with us this evening, but Mr. Duncan is prepared to help you understand from his perspective as the traffic engineer, what were the appropriate actions and what did he do, and actually, how we've maybe gone beyond what he would have initially recommended.
So, I'll give a little bit of history here as well, because this dates back prior to my time here at the city. So, the first one here, I'll go back, this is in 2006, shows the West Main and 8th intersection there. No crosswalk there, really, really nothing. So, this is kind of the baseline. Sometime between 2006 and 2009, again, I'm just going off of our city GIS, crosswalks were added and a bump out was added at this intersection. So, again, sometime in that three-year span, I'm not exactly sure when, but during that three-year span, that was done. Again, in 2013, the crosswalk on 8th Street was changed from just the parallel lines to the more highly visible ladder style. Again, so this is another, you know, five, six years after that. And then, just this last year, we went in and added additional signage, so the yield here to pedestrian signs and the yield markings on the street were added. These are generally reserved for higher-speed, multi-lane roadways, but because of the concern of the neighborhood here, we've gone ahead and put it in at this location as well. You know, again, it doesn't meet the criteria that WEDOT lays out for this type of signage, but this is really the last, the most extensive signage that we can do, shy of doing the full rapid flashing beacon, which I've stated at other meetings, we're trying to really limit where we do those, so that where we do them is effective. So, it doesn't meet any of the criteria for what we would do for a rapid flashing beacon. This is really the most extent that we have signage-wise. You know, we've done, we've changed all the signs to the highly reflective signage that you see in the picture up there. You know, the crosswalks have been updated regularly, every three to five years, it looks like, from the aerial photos, they've gone in and refreshed them. So, that's kind of, you know, what was done this year, and what's been done over the last, you know, nine or 10 years, really. So, if there's any questions regarding that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the work you've been doing, I know you work extensively on this. Is there a significant cost associated with putting in the flashing lights?
There are roughly $10,000 apiece, something like that.
And we would need to, how many?
You'd need one on either side.
So, you would need two?
Yep.
So, it'd be roughly $20,000 to do, and then is there like an installation fee, or would that be all encompassing?
I think that's all encompassing.
So, have there been accidents, in terms of accidents, any pedestrians and vehicular incidents?
Not at this particular area, not within the last five years of data.
I would still be in favor of us exploring, and I understand wholeheartedly, in terms of the data may not support, we've heard from, and I know Ms. Parker, in her absence, she may have been the most vocal individual requesting such, but there have been other community members who just may not attend the council meetings, who have also been adamant that they would like to see such. For me, I don't see the $20,000 as an extremely extensive cost that, for the request, excuse me, in terms of the amount of requests and the outpour that we've heard from the community in regards to this specific want and/or need. So, that's just where I stand, just on my colleagues, no?
I just feel like there's also a lot of other crossings that might merit more investment, maybe, than this one does, if I think of just others throughout the community where people are going even faster, and there's a higher, I mean, you go off the data on that, I just, as a person who, I do go along that route a lot, and I've crossed, I've gone across that crosswalk many times the last few weeks, just knowing this has kind of come up as an issue. But my concern is, we have a lot of other areas where I think that more enhancement could be merited. I know for one of the things that came up during our CIP discussions was even Elliott, which I think seems like a highway to me, and people can't cross it, and we know, we hear a lot about Harris Street, which certainly the speed limits among those areas and the potential for crashes. We know that there is crash rate even at one of those intersections, and so I just, more holistically, just want to make sure that we're strategic in where we employ this, because, you know, there are a lot of areas, and I think to Mr. Duncan's point, that if we have these everywhere, is the thought that people just stop paying attention to them?
Right. I mean, if someone pushes it to go across, and, I mean, there's a set period of time that the lights are flashing, so, you know, you could push it, go across, it's intended for someone who's walking at a slower pace, so a vehicle approaches and no one's there, but the lights are still flashing. And if you just have them every, at every crosswalk, it just lessens their impact, the same as any type of signage. The more you have it, the more you see it, you know, the less it kind of alerts you to a special, you know, event at that crossing. Less, you know, it's, I think it's 330 feet to the 7th Street light that has push-button pedestrian crossing. In this particular location, you In this particular location, you have the train station on the other side, but really that's it. If you're coming from, you know, the other side, you can access through the other parking lot underneath the railroad bridge to get to the train station. If you're going further down on West Main Street to the, I guess it would be the east, you know, you get to Seventh Street, you know, before you really get to anything that you would need to cross the road for. And like I said, there's pedestrian push-buttons there to get across. You know, if you're going the other direction, there's another crosswalk on the other side of the bridge.
But I do think, oh, I'm sorry.
And not too much further past that, there's another signalized intersection that one could use.
My only pushback would be, I do think this is a little nuanced, because this is coming out the back, well, depending on how you look at it, either this is the back entrance or the primary front entrance for a neighborhood that a lot of people are oftentimes on foot. So being that West Haven is right there and a lot of the people who live in that particular neighborhood frequent either Tobe's, Mills', and so forth, like the shops. And then I, like I jogged this route much more frequently as of late. And there is a lot of walking in terms of when people are coming out of West Haven, going across there, but I've noticed a lot more people go to the convenience store up there on the left-hand side, the, whatever that is, like, it's going up on the left, it's right next to the flats.
Okay.
And I know that, I understand wholeheartedly what you're saying, individuals could either walk to the light in front of First Baptist and go across, or they could go further up. But for those who are coming right out of West Haven, just for me, in terms of the outpour that we've heard from the community, as well as the, in my opinion, it's not a significant amount of money. And they would be able to do something that we've heard directly from members of the community that they want in a community therefore. A lot of folks, they don't really talk a great deal about traffic and there's a lot of needs in regards to traffic. And this is something that we've heard, it's been rather vocal from them. I think it would be a win for us just to say, hey, we hear you, let's do this. This isn't a community that often comes to a ton of meetings and say, we want X, Y, and Z. We're getting that now. I just think it would be a good thing for us to do as a city, but that's just one, one person.
I have a question, Mr., so what about the other strategies that were, I think they call it the box, where you actually would paint out that whole intersection so that it was really prominent as a place to stop? As I know that that was done on hydraulic at the end of Mickey, because that was also a very dangerous intersection and people couldn't cross and they couldn't get over, you know, taking a left.
Yeah, I think those, the do not block the box is intended more so for the vehicles to allow, so if there's a vehicle trying to get out Eighth Street and the traffic was backed up on West Main so far that you just couldn't get an opening, that's really what that's intended for. I mean, we could look at doing that, but I haven't heard the outcry from the neighborhood that I can't get out there, you know, with my vehicle. It's much more the pedestrian trying to cross.
That's not true, you're right. That's hard to get in and out there.
Okay. But is it hard to get in and out because of? Right, but that's what I mean, like, putting a do not block the box isn't going to stop the traffic that's moving.
We're thinking about pedestrian.
Let's address the council.
Yeah. Yeah, and so I think also, because we're talking about this a lot, even when, I mean, one of the conversations I recall and that I've been asking about is the cameras on the downtown mall. Are they really necessary? So the perceived risk versus actual risk, and that's why I asked you about the data. I'm just interested if people are, you know, if there have been accidents, how many they've been, what kind of calls are we getting from CPD, you know, to CPD about, you know, the intersection? And then if there's a way that we can figure out, you know, how many individuals are asking, because I haven't received a lot of communication about the intersection. So I just would like a little bit more information. And if, then if it's something that looks...
In the two years I've been here, Ms. Parker is the only one that I have heard from directly about this intersection.
Oh, Ms. Park? Well, I can respect you saying, you're, she's the only one that you've heard from directly.
Yes.
Yeah, you, you.
I'm just saying, like, they haven't been contacting me.
But I think that also speaks to another issue that we have, because this is particularly on a neighborhood that is not in tune with a lot of the intertwines and interworkings of local government. It's a community in which, I mean, to be honest, that often works in a way in which, hey, I know such and such, they're going to go down to the meeting, can you tell them about X, Y, and Z? It's not one in which we have a strong relationship with, or some individuals may have relationships with, but it's not one in which you're going to see, similar to a Park Street or Belmont and so on and so forth, who are going to come and be extremely vocal about, we need a speed bump or we need this light. So I wouldn't want to discredit that. The other part of it, I hear you wholeheartedly when you say that if we put these up all around town, it would diminish the value. But we're not asking about putting them up all around town. We're asking about this particular place in the moment. And I think we have to, let's deal with it in a case-by-case situation. And we've heard, well, excuse me, I've heard from a wide variety of different people on a continuous basis that this is something that individuals are looking for, it hasn't been just Ms. Parker. But again, I'm only one counselor and I'm just speaking.
I want to say in fairness to the traffic engineer, Dr. Bellamy, that, you know, what he's aware of is feedback that has been consistent and persistent from Ms. Parker about this particular intersection. And I would say that if what we're concerned about is sites that are further west, because a lot of the sites you talked about are on the same side of the road as West Haven is, particularly that convenience store, that as somebody who has spent a lot of time in West Haven, you know that everybody going to that is cutting through by the basketball court and going through Mr. Capshaw's vacant lot and going across the street up there, not at A Street. So, I mean, I do think that there's other pathways that people make to the area that you're talking about.
But that way isn't safe. I wouldn't suggest they do that. And that's even more reason why I think we need to have the light, because there is no crosswalk going the route that you and I are describing.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm not trying to discredit your point, I'm like, if we want them to do it right, they need to be taking the crosswalk. And I'm not saying that's not what you're saying, I'm just...
I would just point out that, you know, as Mr. Duncan has said, there's a lack of evidence for him to have implemented other measures. And so in fairness, it's appropriate that he has not yet, absent this comment from council. And that there are clearly some places that require signalized rapid flash beacons and some of them, city staff has recommended, they're in the downtown area, in some of the darkest areas of Market Street, and we have some kind of regulatory issues in getting those through with, you know, historic resources and BAR. So, I mean, there are areas where it's appropriate. I'm not arguing that. So, you know, if council is interested in pursuing this, we can tell you exactly what the installation cost would be.
So Mayor Walker, I would like to at least put this on the, on a future agenda to talk about and get the more information about, you know, any other details, any other complaints. And I'd also like to see what some of the other areas are in the city that have been in need of the flashing light crossings, because I believe there's one actually...
Where I've installed them since I've been here have been site distance issues.
Site distance, and so those criteria would be really helpful, too.
Right, because there's only one of the rapid flashing beacons in the city that actually meets engineering criteria, and that is McIntyre Road where it's 35 miles an hour and four-lane road. That's the only one in the city. All of the other ones have either been put in at council direction, which a few of those have been or are scheduled to be removed, or they were engineering site distance. So there is one that we put in Tenth and Page, up at the top of the hill, where because of the crest, it was, you couldn't see that there was a crosswalk there as you were approaching from either direction. We've looked at putting them around curves so that, you know, if you're coming around a curve and you can't see a pedestrian on one side of the road because of that, so those are really, you know, the criteria that I've used since I've been here to install them. We don't really have, we're far enough from the crest over the top of the bridge here that site distance really isn't an issue to see. So that's why I haven't, up to this point, recommended that we put one in. You can see that there's a crosswalk there, we've added the additional signage, we've got the high-visibility signage, we've got the high-visibility pavement markings, you know. Again, if we, and you all can direct me to do that, but I don't want to fall into, you know, whenever, you know, whichever community, it doesn't matter who it is, but if we're putting them in where they're not warranted, then there's, well, I have criteria of what we're...
I would like to see that criteria, I'd like to see where they've already been installed and that way we can have a more complete review of this situation. Because I definitely understand the need for a process. So, but I think it's something that we also need to have in a public discussion that's noticed and available to the public to come in here, because we're just having a meeting right now about it, no one knows we're going to talk about this tonight.
Just for clarification, in regards to the other streets that have had these installed at council direction, was there a process or just individual counselors?
To my knowledge, it was counselors said, we want them here, 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 and here.
So there's been a precedent in regards to that being done?
There is.
But Mr. Bellamy, you're going to be removing some of them?
Well, I mean, the one, for instance, on the other side of the Belmont Bridge is scheduled to be removed when we've replaced the Belmont Bridge.
Because this is, the other question is that we're supposed to have the West Street, West Main Street improvement, I'd like to see what that plan is calling for in this intersection.
Indeed, but so there's two things with that. The Belmont Bridge, that's a whole bridge that we're essentially going to be replacing, correct? So, I mean, to compare, to compare with that, it, to me, is, it, they're not apples to apples.
But he's saying, once the bridge is back, that it's not...
Yeah, but the, excuse me, the way the traffic's going to be going, the design of that street will be different. Like, how that street is constructed is not the same as how it will be now, when we're talking about the bridge.
It'll be fairly similar.
Fairly similar, but it won't be the same. So, in my opinion, those, just those things aren't apples to the apples. And then even when we talk about the others, we're talking specifically right now about this street in front of Mills', on the backside of West Haven, that people have been saying they need. There's been precedent in which council has clearly said, this is what we've heard, we've seen it, this is what needs to be done, let's go do it. We talk often about, and I'm not, not you, Mr. Duncan, now I'm talking to my colleagues, we talk often about, we want to hear from these segments and portions of the community when they come and tell us very clearly that there's a safety measure in which they want to see done, and we've done it before, maybe not this group of counselors. To me, that's what kind of leads to continuing making people not want to come and voice their opinions, because we want to compare, let's have another study, let's discuss X, Y, and Z. It's a safety issue.
So Mayor Walker, I've asked this to be on the agenda, is there another counselor that wants to have this on a future agenda?
Yeah, I'm happy to have a more robust conversation about this.
Okay, then we'll just get on the agenda.
So I would suggest with council's approval that there needs to be sufficient time then to give you some new data. I've received a message from Chief Brackney that we could have some law enforcement at that area and see if there's any issue with yielding to pedestrians. So I think there's some additional investigation. So I would not be inclined to bring this back to you in one of the next couple of meetings if we need additional data from both PD and the traffic engineer.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
And you, that was your last?
Yes, that was my fourth.
Okay.
I do have one question.
Okay.
And I don't know if other counselors have seen this, but there was a notice that Senators Warner and Kane succeeded in securing $800,000 of additional housing monies from HUD to target it to Charlottesville. Could we have an update on that at some point? And when is that coming? How much is it? How will we process the receipt?
So at your next council meeting, I've asked Ms. Kelly and Mr. Duffield to be present to give you some updates on some releasing of the funds for the Charlottesville Supplemental Rental Assistance Program, potentially some discussion of some updates that need to happen to council in order to release funds for the on-the-job training program that occurred with some of the maintenance skills in public housing. And so I think it'd be perfectly appropriate to ask Mr. Duffield to also update you on what the nature of that additional appropriation was and what purposes are allowable.
Thank you.
All right, now we have our community matters. And first up, we have Meyer Anderson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of council, I'm here to talk about human rights and I want to talk about them in the context of Regenton Community Services Board. And I'm bringing this before, can I just point it over to you? Sorry. I'm bringing this before your attention because in the past two years, Regenton has been found in violation of 18 of my human rights. Local Human Rights Committee is a committee that is appointed by the Department of Behavioral Health to oversee human rights at places like Regenton. That's the board that cited them on 18 violations in the last two years. Two of those violations were discrimination and retaliation. Now, 18 violations, no matter how you add that up, subtract it or divide it, there's no way that they can think that they are squeaky clean and haven't done anything when they've been violated 18 times. It is incredibly challenging already living with a mental health condition. It's made even more challenging when the Community Services Board that is supposed to help you is not only helpful, but is discriminatory, retaliatory, and violating your rights. Now, I just forwarded all members of council by email, an email from the Department of Health and Human Services Office of Civil Rights, because they are, they have opened an investigation into Regenton amongst their most recent violations. Now, the last violations came on March 25th, 2019. Two days later, I was notified by Regenton that my services, case management services, were going to be terminated. That is the type of thing that they do at Regenton to keep people from not speaking out and to have their, use their power and position in a way that is not right. Now, I'm fully aware that the city is not a governing authority over Regenton, but I feel that you have a financial responsibility, because you do give them money to ensure that all entities receiving city dollars are responsible and are upholding the rights of individuals receiving services. So I have a few recommendations, which are already passed around. Number one, I would like for the Office of Human Rights for the city to open an investigation on my specific case against Regenton. I would also like for the city to develop, enforce a zero tolerance of discrimination for all nonprofits receiving city dollars. I would also like it to be mandatory that all human rights regulations and formal complaints that are founded are forwarded, a copy is forwarded to the Office of Human Rights, as well as to all members of the council. And I would like for all nonprofits to be financially bound, because they are receiving city dollars, to uphold their rights and not discrimination, or face losing some funds. And finally, I would like for the city to hold an annual, semi-annual town meeting for residents who receive services from all nonprofit organizations to speak directly to council about their experiences, about their complaints, and about their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sanders, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mayor Walker. Don't do that.
I guess I fought well.
Is there a timeline of what you were looking to hear back from us, or?
I don't have a timeline, but I think time is of the essence, because in my case, my services have already been closed, but most importantly, because it shouldn't be, this is something that needs to be taken seriously and acted upon, because it's, because of stigma with mental health, most people aren't even open about the fact that they experience mental health. So they're not comfortable even coming forward and speaking in situations like this when they have issues. Every time I've gone public, there've been multiple people to contact me. So I would like for this to be a priority of the council, to set some type of timeline or put forth some type of work towards making sure that the rights of citizens, residents of the city, are upheld by all people receiving services.
Okay.
And I'll just say that, you know, this is what I've been talking about just publicly forever, but definitely since 2017 during my campaign, it was one of my number-one platform issues, we worked on this last year trying to revamp the ABRT, which gives funding to nonprofits, but we also have a separate source of funding that some agencies, you know, receive money from, and I think it's essential, and an important ask, that we are demanding from nonprofits that receive funding from us, that the services that they are providing are services that are, you know, healthy, supportive, to the clients that they are supposed to serve, as someone who's worked in the nonprofit, it's a major concern of mine, and I know that a lot of people don't come, you know, come forth and talk, you know, talk about it, and it's something that I'm hoping that we figure out, because it is very important.
I have a technical question then, I don't know if it's for Mr. Blair or Mr. Murphy, but given that this is, Ms. Anderson has made a complaint that speaks of a violation of human rights, is that something that's becoming a legal matter to be looked into? Because we do put board members on Regenton's board, and we do provide, we do have contractual services with the board, but I don't know, is it something that would then just go instead with us inquiring on the part of Mr. Murphy, just meeting with the director of Regenton to begin a conversation about how to proceed? I want to know from the professionals here, how best to approach this, very concerning issue.
Why don't you take the legal end of it, I'll follow up on the other part.
Well, on the legal end, obviously there is your Human Rights Commission that can, I think as Ms. Anderson has requested, open an investigation into that particular aspect. Obviously, not knowing the particulars of this matter, but any citizen, I mean, there are private legal means through a 1983 action, if they felt that a government agency had discriminated against them on the basis of a protected characteristic.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Blair, I mean, you know, it may be difficult at first to figure out what the intersect is for local government, knowing that it's a state construct, you know, having the Human Rights Board and having them found Regenton guilty, as Ms. Anderson has said, of a number of violations against her personally, I think that the key thing is you have a local ordinance, and I assume that the protected class here would be her disability status, and so we could certainly initiate that, make Ms. Green and Mr. Niemeyer aware of the request after this evening. You're aware that this is not the first time Ms. Anderson's been before you, and I did previously sit down with both the Regenton Executive Director and Board Chair, and Ms. Anderson is relaying to you that, you know, some of these incidents are as recent as three weeks ago, right, so that is, of course, of concern. I do think that at least part of this, you know, while we can talk about what our expectations are as a funder, and we do have some responsibility as a funder, because it is kind of this quasi-governmental relationship, but we do exceed that funding requirement by a good bit, I think that's where the leverage lies in the relationship, and so I think we could say what the expectations are, certainly even in this case, which is not ABRT, but that Office of Management and Budget kind of work. I think that part of the trick here is, while Ms. Anderson has been willing to be vocal about her particular circumstances, I feel quite certain that Regenton or any other provider is going to say that we can't talk about any individual case, and so we will need to be dealing with this more from the level of what our expectations are systemically and with all clients, rather than, you know, what we're expecting to happen in Ms. Anderson's case, because I feel quite certain that due to HIPAA and other regulations, there's no way they're going to discuss that particular case with us.
But even outside of particular cases, we should be able to get feedback on, you know, more broadly, some of these issues that are coming up, and we should be able to have an accountability loop, especially given our funding status.
Yeah, I'll just say that in my experience of many years in the human services field, to have this many findings against any agency is extraordinary.
And I'll say that my first time coming before council was about Regenton, back in 20, maybe 11, 12, and it was the exact, you know, I mean, I came on behalf of my clients, but I came to ask council at that time to, you all have signed off on funding and matched funding for Regenton, this is what they're asking of me as a clinician to do on behalf of clients, and so the clients didn't show up, I showed up for them, and so at some point, we have to figure out whether we're going to let the agencies who have the positions of power continue as they have been, or are we going to step in, really put some things in place to make sure that the money that we're giving, we're not just giving money for people to have jobs, we're giving people, organizations money, so that they can serve people well, and if they're not serving people well, that accountability loop that you're talking about, we need to be firm about that, because the only way it's going to get better is if it's clear that there are some consequences associated.
And I would just add to Vice Mayor Hill's comments and questions, that if Mr. Murphy's correct, they probably will not give you individualized case information, but it is certainly within your purview to ask for the number of, if any, founded violations, as well as how many separate individuals have those violations been adjudicated against.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, I certainly would like to make that request. All right, next, we have Chris Meyer.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I would like to welcome Dr. Richardson to the community, and we look forward to your tenure here, and you're welcome. Council members, I am the new Executive Director of the Local Energy Alliance Program, locally known as LEAP, and I'm here to lend my support to the city's effort in setting a new climate change goal and subsequent implementation plan. I do not see the city's current work, the Climate Protection Program, as standing by itself, but linked to many other challenges the city faces, such as affordable housing, quality of life, and economic development, and resiliency. I was saddened when I read last week's Charlottesville Tomorrow article about the example of the retired woman in a Belmont apartment who suffered a $300 winter heating bill for just one month. Unfortunately, we know that this is not an isolated case, and that such bills are most burdensome to low-income residents. LEAP has seen many of these cases and helped through programs to assist in the weatherization or energy efficiency of their homes. By swapping incandescent light bulbs to LEDs, weather stripping doors and windows, and adding insulation, a resident sees their monthly energy bill reduced, in addition to being more comfortable in their homes, their housing becomes more affordable, while also reducing climate-harming emissions. From a city budget perspective, climate-related energy efficiency projects do not have to break the city's already-stretched budget. Energy efficiency work in the city can leverage tens of thousands of dollars from external sources. For example, LEAP is utilizing money from a Dominion Utility Program to provide energy efficiency updates to Crescent Hall, work that is being provided free to the CRAH, and creating financial savings in its operational budget that can be reinvested back into improvements for their buildings. Finally, and overarching, the city's efforts to reduce reliance on fossil fuel energy will make its economy more efficient, resilient, and dynamic. More efficient because the city's residents and businesses overall will spend less on their energy bills, more resilient because residents and businesses won't be impacted as severely when electricity prices surge higher or services knocked out, more dynamic because local businesses providing and supporting renewable energy and energy efficiency will be strengthened and employment increased. With my final words, I want to reiterate my support for strengthening the city's climate change ambition, remind you of the linkages to affordable housing and a resilient local economy, and offer LEAP's assistance in however it may be of help. Good luck with the rest of your proceedings this evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Tom Vander.
Madam Mayor, and members of council, thank you for letting me speak, I'm just going to speak for a moment, I wanted to especially thank you for your attention to the issue of the problems with the access to McIntyre Park and the Dogwood Vietnam Memorial, and I would like to thank Mr. Murphy for recommending that you create an acting group, and so I hope that can move forward very quickly. And with your permission, we actually have three people in a row to speak on this topic, but we don't want to clutter you up too much, and so with your permission, we'd just like to allow Mr. Schisler to speak.
Okay.
Come on out, Jim.
Man, speaking like a good former counselor, using efficient use of the time, man, okay.
At a reasonable hour.
See you, Mr. Vander, appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, members of council, Mr. Murphy, and all the members of city staff, I'm James D. Schisler, Jim Schisler, I'm a lifelong resident and citizen of the city of Charlottesville, and my residence is in Charlottesville, 901 Rugby Road. I'm here to speak with you this evening regarding the inadequate parking and access for the Dogwood Vietnam Memorial, the nation's first memorial dedicated to those who served in Vietnam in Southeast Asia, and particularly to the 28 area men who gave their lives in that service, and also for the sacrifice of the families that still suffer that sacrifice. The memorial was dedicated April 20, 1966. The memorial is further standing 53 years of commemorating that war and our losses. Today, the memorial sits in the exact same original location as was directed by then City Manager James E. Boeing, a location that he selected particularly for its prominence and for its viewership by the public on the bypass. Mr. Boeing further directed that the memorial be of a hometown nature, and it be constructed utilizing materials of historical significance to Charlottesville. Those three directives were followed, and the memorial continued in that manner for 47 years. With the design for the construction of McIntyre Road extended, and the John Warner Parkway, and the Route 250 bypass interchange, the significance of the Dogwood Vietnam Memorial was recognized, and it was determined that the memorial would be improved as a part of that project. Gratefully, the Dogwood Vietnam Memorial Committee was invited to be a part of the redesign process, and every request that we, the committee, made was granted, and the memorial's magnificence improvements were accomplished in a very harmonious way. As such, the once hometown memorial far exceeds most of the memorials of the Vietnam War in this country. During the design process for the construction of the memorial, very little was stated or discussed regarding parking and access. Perhaps I was negligent in not seeking more information, but the conversation was that adequate parking and access would be provided, and two, the accepted design for the interchange G1 did show a pedestrian bridge across John Warner Parkway, accessing the hillside, making for more reasonable access to the memorial. And it was assumed, too, that we would have access through what is now the skate park and across the crest of the hill on the old golf course. Unfortunately, while parking and access for the memorial has always been difficult, the recent development of McIntyre Park East has rendered the memorial even more difficult to access, that is, parking where the skate park now exists has been eliminated, the entrance exit to the bypass has been closed, and the access route across the old golf course is prohibited except for three events at the memorial annually. For some reason, the pedestrian bridge across John Warner Parkway-Maintintyre Road was never Conversation with and requests to city staff over the past few months have provided very few remedies, and those remedies are not adequate and don't speak to our need. We are encouraged and pleased by Mr. Murphy's pronouncement, asking that a study group be established, and we look forward to being able to work in that manner with you all. So finally, I urge our city council to support and accomplish the proper access, so all can visit the memorial, particularly our Vietnam veterans, our older people, and those with mobility issues. Thank you, we look forward to working with you on this improvement and working on this important endeavor. Thank you, I'm Jim Schisler.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, I just wanted to suggest, and you may be thinking about this already, but Chuck Proctor, who is the Culpeper District Engineer from VDOT, might be a good person to put on the working group, since he would be the one that would know how to talk about access issues.
Thank you.
He's been very, very helpful on the MPO, and on the hydraulic planning and advisory panels, so that's how I know what he knows and what he can do.
Thank you.
Ellen Osborne.
Good evening.
I'm Ellen Osborne, I'm the Executive Director of Literacy Volunteers, and you guys give us money, so I'm going to tell you what we've done the last eight months. First eight months of the year, 22 of our students have obtained a higher-paying job, they started one place, and they obtained a higher-paying job. Nine have advanced in a current job, meaning they have gotten a promotion. Twenty entered employment for the first time. Places that have come up, that they're employed are JCPenney, UVA Housekeeping, Aramark, we have about 25% of our students work either with UVA or Aramark, a lot of construction work, one of them went from being a dishwasher to working in food prep at a restaurant, they work at Doubletree Hotel, Rosewood Village, were getting some CDL, Commercial Driver's Licenses. One student remarked that they obtained a third job, but didn't specify what it was. They started a new job, observing safety on construction sites, somebody worked at Orange Dot Bakery, new job there, Subway, Islamic Society of Central Virginia, self-employed, became self-employed by cleaning houses, Darden, Belton, Kroger, Omni, Panera Bread, Doma Restaurant, Ten, Monsoon CM. We have had a couple become CNAs, or about nurse aide, one of them was hired by a Charlottesville City Agency, so I'm not going to tell you what agency, but that's cool. When I saw that, I thought you guys would like to know. One became a sous chef at Red Hub Food Company, one student won two awards and a monetary bonus at his job at the Omni, we had one start a home maintenance business, and we've had somebody working, driving a supply truck for Walmart, and one got a full-time job with Alt Energy Solar Panels, so I want to thank you for your support, if you ever hear anybody who's not... If you ever hear anybody who's not satisfied with the services that they receive at Literacy Volunteers, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Rich Severin.
We're going to give that three minutes back to you, too.
Okay, thank you. All right. Katrina Turner.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Thank you all for coming.
Mr. Murphy, the letter that you handed me last city council, that's not the letter I asked for. I asked for a letter stating from the chief of police that she did not view a video of my son's arrest, and that she made a mistake. Instead, the only thing she did was took out the word "video" and replaced it with "photo." That's not what I asked for. That's not holding, that's not her showing her mistake that she made when she wrote that first letter to me. That's just trying to cover something up, because if she just writes me another letter and takes out that word and puts back in another word, that's not showing what I asked her to do. I asked for a letter stating that what she said, now she's reviewing my son's case, there are so many mistakes in the letter that she wrote me when she reviewed my son's case, as far as her saying I lied on a police officer in this video right here. I'm asking for a letter in writing that she did not view a video. I don't want it just changed. I don't want the words just changed. I want it stating that the previous letter that she wrote me, she stated that she viewed a video of my son's arrest. Either I want to see the video of my son's arrest, or I want the letter to state that my last letter I wrote to you was incorrect. I did not view a video. I only looked at a photo. Now, this might not be important to anybody that I'm talking to right now, but for me, it's important for a lot. I have the policies here, okay? And I know, it's not in this policy, I know that when I asked for a letter, I didn't ask for one word to be changed in that letter. I asked for her to say what she did in that letter, and I just want to know why is that so hard for her to put that down? I already know that when she did the complaint process with us, I know with what she put in these letters, somebody else should be investigating this, and I know this for a
So, Ms. Turner, we discussed this before at a council meeting openly about the fact that you are also aware that there was no videotape.
And I understand, but that's what I need in writing. I need that down in writing.
But you were present, and you know that there wasn't a videotape.
But that, okay, so how did she say she viewed a video? How did she say she viewed a video if there was not a video there? I understand about mistakes, but that's what I want her to write. I made a mistake when I said I viewed a video and I did not view a video. I only looked at a photo. I want that written. That's what I want written, because she didn't view a videotape. And when she just took that word "video" out, instead of explaining that her last letter to me was not correct, she did not correct that letter. The only thing she did was replace one word with another.
That's what we asked her to do.
That's not what I asked for. I asked for it stating that she made that mistake. That's what I have been asking for.
But I guess what I'm trying to get to is the fact that we went through the evening that this was pre-body cam, that some of this took place in the house, some of it was outside, that there wasn't a tape, that you are...
So why is it so hard for her to put that on tape?
So you are saying, too, that you know that there isn't a videotape.
I don't know anything at this point right now, Mayor Walker.
Mayor Walker.
I don't know anything with everything that's been thrown at me. I don't know if there's a videotape or not.
Okay.
And if it is, I would like to see it, because it will show everything I'm saying.
But you were there.
I was there, and at that time, I was told there was no body cam. There was no...
But that was before we had body cams, so there wasn't...
But, no, this is 2016. I was told there was body cam and there was cameras in the vehicles. I was told this, but not by the police department, because they told me they didn't have cameras at that time. But I was told that that's a lie, because there...
I think that what is of significance is, you know, this particular case obviously has received a lot of review. Two different city managers, three different police chiefs. Ms. Turner has continued to ask for what I believe is a correction of the record in the finding letter. And it is my belief that Chief Brackney has responded to that, not only in public in this forum by telling you that we would correct the record and that there was no video, but also by way of issuing a new letter. So now Ms. Turner is in possession... One moment, please, Ms. Turner.
See, this is what...
Now Ms. Turner is in possession of a letter that was, that said "video" with one date, and with the corrected letter with April 1st as the date, that is a new statement of the disposition of the case. I can't imagine what else... I'm sorry that Ms. Turner doesn't believe that the format, that the correction of the record met her requirements, but in my opinion, Chief Brackney has told her that there was video and corrected the form. I don't know what else that I should ask the chief to do at this point.
So it's okay that when I ask for something corrected, that she only changes a word so it doesn't show where her mistake was?
You have both letters.
But that doesn't matter. I still want her to say that, to write that mistake down. What is so, she made a mistake. Did she make a mistake?
You have the original letter that you are saying...
But did she make a mistake? That's what I'm trying to ask. Why is it hard for her to write that down?
You want her to say to you, "I use photo, video instead of photo," but you have two letters that state that...
I want her to say that in the previous letter I wrote you, I stated that I viewed a video of your son's arrest. I was incorrect. That's what I want from the chief of police. I want her to be held accountable for what she did. Now, am I wrong? I don't see me being wrong to ask for that letter stating that she is wrong. Exactly. How am I wrong?
Okay, so I am not supporting the request. So the other counselors, if you will?
This is a matter of internal affairs investigation between the police chief and the city manager. I appreciate the mayor's support and the remainder of the council, but I'm not going to ask the police chief to revisit the issue.
Wow. This is the cover-up that I've been telling y'all about, okay? Y'all think complaints. This is another complaint that I filed on the chief of police, but they were, they allowed me to walk out the police department without any information. There's no signature on here. There's no date of when I filed this complaint, nothing. This is the incompetence I'm trying to tell you that's going on in this police department.
So you filled the complaint out?
This is another one. After I received that letter from Mr. Murphy, I went straight and filed this complaint.
She did something new?
I went straight and filed this complaint.
Is that a new complaint, or...
This is a new complaint.
And what's that complaint?
I haven't heard anything from it, because there's nothing. The officer didn't even sign it. They don't, I don't even know if this complaint was filed.
So what did she do?
The complaint is in. I'm taking up enough time. The complaint is in, but it's all in the complaint, but that's not what I'm talking about. This was allowed to leave out of the police department incorrect.
So I have filed a complaint against the police before, and I fill out the complaint and turn it in, and they...
And they're supposed to fill this out, sign this complaint, make a copy of it, and hand it over to you. I filled it out. I did my part. I handed it over. Instead of them filling out all this to let them know when I filed this complaint, nothing was going. Nothing is on here. Nobody even, I don't even know if anybody even knows I have this complaint was filed. And is this what people are going through when we file complaints? And if the police don't do what they're supposed to do, are they turning these complaints in?
So does Mr. Murphy have that complaint?
I don't know who has it. I filed this one a second ago.
So would you like for us to take a, make a copy of it to make sure that we have it?
I'm aware of the complaint, Mayor Walker.
Okay. You have the copy. Okay, so it did...
Okay, so I haven't gotten anything. I haven't gotten a letter stating they got the complaint. I haven't gotten anything for anything about this complaint. So I didn't even know if it was even filed because of this information not being on it.
All right.
So now it's received, but I haven't gotten anything to...
So are we outside the timeline to respond?
Not that I'm aware of. I believe it came in, as Ms. Turner said, immediately after the council meeting. I have not received it myself yet. It is in the city attorney's office, and it's a matter that we will be discussing this week.
Okay. So in terms of the timeline that she's supposed to get notified, what's that timeline?
I can show it to you, because in the policy right here is when they get the receipt of the complaint.
You know, I'm not able to cite you the policy off the top of my head. What I can tell you is that, you know, since Ms. Turner's allegation is against the chief rather than the typical process, the first thing that needs to be decided is the city manager, in collaboration with the city attorney, needs to determine whether I can investigate the case, or as you're aware, in the last instance, I decided, elected to contract with a third party for that. So that's the decision that'll be made this week, and Ms. Turner will be notified.
But every little do people know that when we get an outside investigation, it still comes back to Mike Murphy to decide. So what good is the outside investigation?
Emily Dreyfus.
My name is Emily Dreyfus, and I'm an organizer with the Legal Aid Justice Center and on the advisory council for the Public Housing Association of Residents. I'm here for a few different things. One is I wanted to thank you very much for your action to dedicate additional funding toward affordable housing. This is a really historic piece of progress, and we're grateful. I also wanted to follow up on some concerns that have been circulating in the community about what's happening with residents at Belmont Apartments, 1000 Monticello Road. These are some of our most vulnerable neighbors. I've gotten to know almost everyone who lives there, and there are several elderly and very fragile folks there with lots of health needs. There are also younger people with significant disabilities, and they received an eviction notice that I'm happy to say looks like it may be turning a corner, but I wanted to draw your attention to it and suggest that the city consider how you all can be helpful in the future, because I think there's probably a need for some additional rental assistance vouchers or other forms of support that will allow people to stay if the landlord agrees that people will be able to remain in their homes. I think there'll be more on that in the near future, but I am really hopeful that things will work out. I also wanted to urge people in the community who are watching to call Legal Aid when something like this happens. We didn't hear about it for a couple of weeks, and I think if we'd heard about it right away, then there might have been less displacement, because people went into a sheer panic, a lot of the folks living there, and have already found places to stay, some of them, some not, because I talked with one person whose income is, I think, around $860 a month and can't find anything for less than $700. So that's just not livable, obviously, and I'm sure other people are in similar situations there. So if you hear of something like this going on, please let us know. And Legal Aid's phone number is 977-0553. And lastly, I just wanted to follow up on the comments about the traffic at 8th and West Main, because the pictures showed a really calm street, and that is a hectic area. I drive through there pretty frequently. I walk through there occasionally, and there's a lot going on. So you cannot even notice that crosswalk, because there are so many different things happening nearby. And I think more importantly than the science of it is the potential to be responsive. This is a community, West Haven and other low-income folks in Charlottesville, who are often done, too, and we all know that history, and we need to do better and be responsive and do what they're asking for. Thank you.
So I have a question about the individuals at, and this is more from Mr. Murphy, is this something that we can direct to, for individuals to be supported by the voucher program?
Good question. You know, what I'd say, and I know that Ms. Dimmick's in my office watching the meeting, I just asked her to come in, too. You know, there are, I believe, 46 units in this apartment building. It's my understanding that there are about eight to 10 people who may need quite a bit of assistance with relocation. And I'm of the opinion that, you know, there's a number of times where city government needs to take the lead, and sometimes where ours is part of the supporting role and to figure out how we work with the community partners who are at the table. And this is an instance where if funding is identified, that there's needed, you know, then the city will take a role. Ms. Dimmick has been a part of the primary planning group. Some of the work that's been done by the Legal Aid Justice Center, by Piedmont Housing Alliance in particular, has been really important. The developer is being engaged last week and again this week. So I'm hopeful, as Ms. Dreyfus has indicated, that perhaps the importance of this issue and what the developer's responsibility may be, that that has been inferred effectively at this point. That all said, I do, you know, have Ms. Dimmick tracking this carefully, and we're prepared as a city to lend a hand where it is necessary, but this is a community problem where I think we also need to applaud that sometimes the community solves the problems, both with the, you know, community members and the nonprofits, and this is in great part headed in that direction. So I do want to say thank you, particularly to Mr. Mathon, the folks at Legal Aid, and any others.
I received a message today that he, in a meeting, because we were supposed to meet at three, but I wasn't there, but in a meeting today, he agreed to stop the displacement/eviction proceedings against the longtime residents of Belmont Apartments who have been unable, who have been unable to find replacement housing, including several folks who are elderly and/or blind. And he's open to long-term solutions to maintain the same number of affordable housing units on site as they are now, which is 23. So I know there's discussions moving in the right direction. I know, Ian, I had a... I know, Ian and I had a conversation earlier in the week, but I know some folks met with them today. Mr. Norris and Grant Duffield and a few others, Ms. Elaine Poehm. And those talks have seemed to go very well. So, it looks like it's in the right direction and we've held them off. The community has. And staff, yes, Ms. Dimmick.
I just watched.
But also, I would like, even if, you know, it's, if they get to stay, if you're talking about someone with the income of $800 a month, if our vouchers can assist them, even if they're in the same location, then I would like for us to explore whether we, you know, we can help them.
Right now, there are funds available in a variety of pockets, both state funds that the Haven and the Thomas Jefferson Area Coalition for the Homeless receive, but also funds in our emergency fund that the city operates. So, there's money available to supplement should that become necessary. And I understand that, that the developer's considering phasing in some of the rehabs because this is a building that needs some rehab and some attention. So, is there a way to phase that process in so fewer people are affected in the process and maybe use our funds to, if the rent necessarily has to go up at the end, use our local dollars to help supplement those rents on an ongoing basis? But, but the hope is that, that this gets resolved at a community level before, both either the philanthropic community or the government money has to be tapped. And I think it's on the path to do that.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, Harold Foley.
Harold Foley, Legal Aid. I concede my time to Joyce.
Good evening.
Hello, my name's Joyce Hillstrom. I've lived in Charlottesville for almost half my life. That means I've lived here for over 35 years.
Is that 35 years?
That's not quite half. I'm not 35 years old. And I'm a very, I'm very honored to be a member of People's Coalition and other groups in town. I want to thank city council for the very hard work, the many, many hours you put in. And also this group that's trying to create the civilian review board, they have worked so hard. I've, I've attended maybe a third to a half of their meetings. They are really trying to create something that will make our city good. Not again, but make it good. And so, also, I want to bring your attention to the article that was in the progress on Friday about current statistics on police action, which said that as recently as last month, half to almost two-thirds of police stops and arrests are made to black people who make up 19% of the population. We've got to change that. And I want the, the People's Coalition and the, the new group that's going to be Oversight Commission to be a support to Chief Brackney in improving our police department. There's no two sides on it. Everybody's on the same page trying to make the police department better, to create trust in our town. Because when people are afraid, it brings out the worst in them, in the police and in the people. And we don't need to sink to that level of threatening people and harassing people because of what they look like. So, I, the People's Coalition completely supports the bylaws that the, this initial CRB group is going to present to you on Wednesday or talk to you about on Wednesday and then present in May, and we hope that you will also support it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No?
My name's Brad Slukum. I'm a city resident. I came here expecting an update on the city's climate plan and I'm curious as to why that might not be happening today. I only heard about that pretty recently when I looked at the agenda, but I thought I had heard that we would be getting some info on that today. But regardless, I would like to just impress on the urgency that that sort of planning move forward because it affects basically every issue that gets talked about here every week. And for younger folks like me, you know, the situation looks dire, more dire basically every week. You know, disasters all over the world, you know, fires, floods, et cetera. We've all heard the doomsday things, but it'd be really nice to see our city taking the lead. I know that there is a lot of work being done, but it would be great to have more updates on those sorts of things. So, thank you.
I'm understanding it's May 6.
Yeah, you know, we've been working with the groups that wanted to come and make comment, including C3, our environmental office. I know that there's a potential resolution from the council and all of that slated for the next meeting, May 6. And apologize if that didn't get communicated through whatever groups you're networking with, but certainly those groups are certain, are aware of the date. Yeah, no doubt.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No, all right. Going to close the Community Matters and we're going to take a break until 8:15?
8:15?
15.
15.
15.
50, 50, 50.